I'll be glad.
To us pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings that you've given us for health, strength, and peace. Father, we pray a special blessing for our country, for our city, and for our first responders and all that protect us. We pray that you would be with us as commissioners, that we will do what's right for our community. Be with us in all the things that we do, these things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Okay, next, I need to do the roll call, so will you do the roll call, please?
Altizer?
Tell them, I'm here.
Evans? Hardwick? Hasty?
Here.
Longmire?
Here.
Slattery?
Here.
Six present.
All right, third thing on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So move.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Do I do this by roll call, or do I have to have her do it?
This one can be roll call.
Okay. So, roll call, please. You've got the B team tonight, you all, sorry about this, okay? But I will, I will step it up as I get better at it.
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire? Slattery?
Yes.
Six approve. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next is the public comment, agenda items only, and we have one person that's signed up for that. His name is Wayne Hines. So if you can step up here to the podium, say your name, your address, and then you're welcome to say what you need to say.
All right, and I'm Wayne Hines. I live at 112 Newport Circle here in Hendersonville, there in the Bluegrass Landing neighborhood. And I'm here to represent, as far as our HOA is concerned, there. And this evening, we just had questions concerning the property that sits right in our front door there. We've had three other businesses that have moved in there on the north end, as far as where our property is located. And now, we understand there's a AutoZone that's going to be moving in on the, the other entrance, at the side of the entrance of our property. And what we wanted to do is just to try to ask some questions, or throw some questions out, that we hope might be able to be answered this evening. And I'm sorry, I had to write these down because I couldn't remember all of them. So if you don't mind, I'll just read off the questions. Is that appropriate at this time to ask those? All right. All right, my first question that we had was what type of barrier will be built to separate the business property from the residents? Because we understand that we're right on the property line. How will the runoff of the business affect the greenway that the neighborhood established about the Bluegrass property that's there? And it's a property that we own, and we just wanted to understand how that's going to affect the greenway that we have there. And we understand that that was established for nothing to be built there. The next is what measures are being planned for the lighting at the business after operating hours? And then, what are the guidelines for the curb appeal for that? And due to the increased volume of traffic, will a traffic light be installed there at the area? And are there plans for the second piece of property, which, once you pass the greenway going south? Is it for sale, or is it going to be subdivided? What are the plans for that piece of property as well? And then, we wanted to know what that piece of property might be classified as. So what could be built on that next piece of property? And then finally, will the waste area be enclosed? And those are the questions that we had. We asked these same questions, or similar questions, whenever we had other businesses to go in. And so we just felt like, at this point, we were very uncertain with what the decisions had been made of how all of these issues were going to be taken care of. All right, thank you for your time.
Sorry, you guys, a little different twist there. Anybody else wanted to speak that did not sign up? Just want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity. All right, we're good. We'll consider that closed, and then we'll move ahead. I have next on the agenda the minutes from last week. Do I have a motion to approve? All right.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Charles and Wendy. And next, we will do this vote by our machines in front of us, okay? All done. All right, all finished.
Motion passes with six yeses, no abstentions, and no nos.
Can I just say one thing on the voting machine? It's got the wrong name for Jeff and me, so you may want to correct that.
It's based on where you're sitting.
Okay, I understand that. Just want to make sure it gets corrected.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda will be, okay, it's next is our consent agenda. But since Mr. Hines brought up the questions, we're going to change things around a little bit. And we're going to give Keith the opportunity to speak to these points as much as he can. If we need to bring anybody else in, we will. And then hopefully, we'll answer all your questions, okay? So, take it away, Keith.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So typically, in a typical, in a typical meeting, we wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity or the time to address like we're going to right now. But with the, with what we have on the agenda, seems like a very short agenda, I think we can probably go through and address some of these things. This particular item is, is on the consent agenda, because it meets all the different requirements, and, and they've agreed to all the staff, staff comments. But I think what we could do, if the, if the chairman and the commissioner are okay with it, we can kind of go through some of these things, and at least address that prior to, to voting on the consent agenda. That maybe would be helpful for the neighborhood folks to, to hear the information. The first question the gentleman had was what type of barrier will be back there on the back, the back of this property? If you can, could we pull up the image on the PowerPoint of that? So we have that up there? We've got an image up there. What kind of barrier would be on the back of the property? Currently, there is a fence, and I think that fence is, from what I understand, is going to be removed, and a new fence put in wherever the property line is. That's one of the staff comments that we have, that they've agreed to, is that there is a buffer that's required on that backside, where you see all those lines on the rear of the property. Right against the property line, there's a requirement for a buffer. Mr. Whitten, can you describe what the minimum buffer is required there?
Sure, so the minimum standard is a 20-foot buffer. However, that, well, a 20-foot buffer with the prescribed number of evergreen and deciduous trees within that buffer. Our ordinance does allow for that buffer width to be reduced by up to a third, and the, the number of landscape plants to be reduced by up to a third, with the addition of a wood privacy fence, which they will be providing here. So their proposed buffer will, will fall within the prescribed parameters of, of requirements of the zoning ordinance. But that will, it will include evergreens, some deciduous trees, as well as the, the wood privacy fence.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitten. The next question was how will the runoff from the site impact a, a greenway that is in the neighborhood? And just maybe generally, how is, how is the runoff of the site being impacted? Stephen, maybe if you can just address that, or engineers?
Certainly, the, the developer submitted plans that included a detention area. That detention area collects water from the site, and more or less, the post-development conditions are such that pre-development runoff from the site is not exceeded. So, that, that eventually ends up in that, that drainage area and continues onward, as it has.
Okay, all right, thank you, Stephen. The next one was, is about the lighting. Is there any particular limits? I don't believe there are for lighting after hours, or generally, the lighting in regards to especially how it will impact the homes in the rear. Timothy, can you address that? I think we had something with some requirements for shields or something?
Yes, so, of course, we have a, a standard requirement that commercial lighting is, is a threshold of light that cannot transmit across a residential property line. They meet that maximum. In addition to that, we requested them to install glare shields on the backsides of their, any lights that are between the residences and, and the building. So they've agreed to that, they've agreed to install those glare shields. We don't have the restrictions on, on the time of day that those lights operate. The, the owner might be able to speak to that. But that's, those are the, the requirements that we've imposed as far as lighting.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten. The next question was about the, I'm sorry.
He wanted to speak, I think he's part of the ownership. You want to wait until we get to the consent agenda?
Yeah. Well, we'll do it, maybe just, yeah. Was in regards to the curb appeal. And you can see up there is what the, the proposed plan is for the, for the elevation. This is probably, probably the sixth, maybe the fifth or sixth draft. We've worked with, with AutoZone here over the last several months, even before they had submitted, to make sure to be sensitive architecturally to the area, and sort of complement what Dollar, the architecture of Dollar General, and the architecture for that particular plan development. And so, this is pretty much all brick, and there is articulation on the corners, and then glazing, glass on the, on the fronts and the sides. So this is the appearance of the, of the building, which meets our design, our design standards. Also, a question was about, is there going to be a traffic light? I don't believe, this did not trigger, Stephen, that there's no traffic light that's going to be installed as a part of this?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and then, on the remaining property, on that property over to the left of the screen, I think the question was, how will that property be developed? At this time, we're not, this is the only thing that's been submitted. We're not aware of really what the plans are, are there. We have required across access easement, across the front of the property, to serve that, that adjacent lot. But we, we don't know what that, what that use is going to be on that, on that adjacent lot. And what could be built there? Timothy, could you address the uses that are allowed? And then, this particular use, is it by right use in that particular plan development? But there are limits on what, what could be built there.
Sure, that, yes, that remaining property, like Keith said, there is a master plan that was done, I think, back, back in the eighties. So those uses are, I, I don't have it in front of me, but it's retail-type uses, commercial uses, the same uses that you see on the other side of the street, including daycare, financial institutions, office. Those are the types of uses that, that would be permitted by right on that property.
Thank you, Timothy. I think the last question was, the waste area, or where the dumpster is going to be, is that going to be screened? And it will be, and it, we require that on all projects, that the dumpster is screened with like material of the building. So that'll be brick that'll be around that, around that particular dumpster. I'm not sure, where's that location of that dumpster, just to point that out?
It's at the rear of the building.
It's at the rear of the building. So, so it'll be, it'll be enclosed with, with a brick enclosure. And so, this isn't something that we typically get to do, to address on something on the consent agenda. But I thought this was an opportunity where we could, could go ahead and address some of those things, Mr. Chairman. That, okay.
I'm good. From the commission, you all have any questions, any comments?
I, I have a question, if it's improper.
Yeah, we really can't.
We, we're, we're supposed to move past that now, we're sorry. Well, next, we come to our consent agenda.
Oh wait, I had a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, Wendy.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
Is this AutoZone replacing the one that's two and a half miles down Main Street? Or is this a second location?
I, I don't know what their plans are, as far as.
Is anybody here? Can we have them, or no?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll bring them up.
I think it'd be okay.
Okay, since we're on the consent agenda, we can bring up the developers, if you don't mind. Please, say your name, where you're from.
My name's Mike Gilbert, I'm representing the developer. I'm from 4209 Gallatin Pike, Nashville, Tennessee. This is an additional store, not a replacement store.
Okay. Thank you. I understand it's by, it's an acceptable use in the plan. But it, it's alarming to me, the number of automotive-related businesses that are moving further and further up Main Street in Hendersonville. I, I did a, a quick count, felt a little bit like Commissioner Evans, I did my homework. But I did a, a quick count just this afternoon, and beginning at Rockland Road to this site, 4.5 miles, and there are 45 automotive-related businesses in 4.5 miles. And it's just an awfully dense, seems to me, a dense amount of automotive-related businesses, whom we consistently or continuously talk about Westlake and needing to improve how that looks. I'm, I'm disappointed that, that we're moving this automotive trend further and further up Main Street. My own personal opinion.
All right. On the consent agenda, any other questions, any other comments? Anybody got questions from the developers, if they're here? All right, with that, we're ready for a vote on this. Do you want to?
Yeah, maybe just.
All right, so, again, we'll go back here. Keith has offered to go over all the different items on the consent agenda. So the first one is Timothy, if you want to talk about the Alexander Commercial Project Phase One Site Plan?
Thank you. Yeah, so this is, this is located across the street from the Bradford Berry House, in between Regent's Bank and Simmons Bank. The, the planned development for this was approved back last fall. It's a three-lot development. Two of the lots, the, the lots one and three are being developed here. Fast pace on Lot One, Starbucks on the east lot. Middle lot will remain undeveloped at this time, except for the frontage road, stretching across it along with a few parking spaces tagged on to that frontage road. So that's, that's that project.
All right.
So, then you go over the AutoZone?
Yeah.
He can do that one.
Is that one too?
Yeah.
All right, Timothy, you're up again. You have the AutoZone site plan?
Yeah.
Did Wendy have a question? That's okay.
I was just asking a question about if there was street access from that center lot. Timothy said there is.
Okay. All right, Timothy, AutoZone.
AutoZone, okay. So, yeah, so this is located in front of Bluegrass Landing, as we discussed, part of a planned development for some outlots there along the front, all, all commercial outlots. This will be about a seven, a little bit less than a 7,000 square foot retail, commercial facility. And the, the access to this lot will be off of Britann.
Okay. Any comments? Go ahead.
Mike, his comment is really back. Excuse me. Is the developer here for the Alexander place?
I'm just curious, are they, are you guys going to continue to market that middle lot, or is it?
So the developer, the actual developer is out of the country right now. But he has someone that is interested in it. They're just not to the point that these other two.
Oh, they need you to come.
Will you step up to the mic? Say your name, your address, what you're representing.
I'm Adam Ledzinger, I'm the engineer for the, for this project, and I'm from Lexington, Tennessee. If you want my home address, I'll give it to you. But anyways, so, he does have interested, he has an interested party that is, they may have signed an, an LOI. However, they just, they were so far behind these other two, that we needed to move on with these other two. So.
With, with the other two, you're past the LOI stage, and you've got signed leases, ready to go?
Or very close to sign leases.
Okay.
I, I won't speak to that, because I don't actually know that.
Okay. I was just curious, based on what I saw, I didn't know if the middle lot was going to just not be developed, or if it would.
I, I would, again, I, I don't know their timeframe. I would expect that you would see a site plan for that fairly quickly.
Okay.
You know, not in the next month or two, but I don't know. Maybe.
Okay.
But I, as I, I know that they're interested, and I know that they're very interested, but as far as how fast they're going to move, I, I don't know.
That's all I had.
Set up. Okay. Commissioners, anybody else have questions about this project? All right, we'll move ahead. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, the next one will be Chick-fil-A, and again, Timothy, your name, your draw.
Okay, so this is located in front of the Bradford Berry House, next to where Pella Windows is about to open there. This is a, a quick-service restaurant, Chick-fil-A restaurant. It will have access, right-in, right-out access off of Main Street, and then access off of existing Mayfair Boulevard at the, at the rear. And when there's other outlots to the eat, to the northeast of it, develop, then eventually have access off, off of the, the unnamed road that goes back to the Bradford Berry House, maybe next to, next to City Hall. So it should have, it should have plenty of access, once all that is developed out.
I would mention just one thing, with all the projects, you know, we work quite a bit on the elevations. We worked with Chick-fil-A for months to get the elevation that you see this evening. That incorporates a lot of different things, and really maximizes stacking ability with the location of the drive-through and everything, as well as visually just how it, how it looks. So, we, we appreciate them working with us on this, on the elevations.
All right. John, I saw you had a question earlier, do you have a question?
I, I can, I can go ahead and, and speak to it, I guess. This, this kind of plays into it, when we were talking, the previous project that we talked about, when Chick-fil-A was going to be in the middle lot, I made a statement then, that I would not be for that, that final lot plan, if we had a, a third business there that had a drive-through, because we've doubled up on the Simmons Bank in and out. We've got a left in, or right in, right out, and then we're also coming out over next to the Burger King, if I'm, if I remember right. And obviously, the Chick-fil-A is going somewhere else. If, if that middle lot, which is in the depth of the hole there, winds up being another drive-through, I, I won't be voting for it. So I'm hoping that something besides another drive-through business comes into that second lot. And I'm glad Chick-fil-A moved a little bit off the road. As always, the people come first, then come the cars, then come the AutoZones that have to take care of the cars, and then come the restaurants that have to feed the people. It's, it's a very simple equation, and here we are. So eventually, there'll have to be a traffic light somewhere in there. There, there's no choice. There's, there's just no, no other way to do that. And on up the road, as we stack more and more on out from the middle of town, we'll still have to have more traffic lights. And soon, you'll see us going a block at a time on Highway 31, if, if we're not already. So, just a comment.
All right. Well, speaking of that comment, John, we, I'm going to let, let Keith speak, because he has comments about the red light, okay?
Yeah. There will be a stoplight installed, the Alexander, where the Starbucks is located, and, and Mayfair, where the Chick-fil-A. Both of those parties are covering the cost of the, of a new stoplight and improvements to that intersection. And our, the city engineering department is in the process of working toward getting, making that happen. So that process has started, so I'm not sure of the timeframe. Stephen may, may have a timeframe that, that he is aware of. But, so there will be a light at that, at that intersection.
Charles, you're up.
Michael Row North, that, public right of way or private?
That, it's, it's, it's public a little bit, right?
Yes, so, well, it's, it's, it's private.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe.
That answer my question.
It may, it may be public up to, I'd have to check on this, it may be public up to that first, what will be the first entrance into this, the lot there to the, the east. If it is, it's just a short section.
I, I believe it is public for that short segment up through there. The back part is not, is not, it's, that's private.
Okay. And that's just going to be access for.
Yeah.
Further development.
Yeah, where the light's going to come out at, yeah.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Wendy, you have questions?
Yes, thank you. Two questions on the Chick-fil-A project. The requirement is 61 parking spaces, but they're going to do an extra 18. And I distinctly remember at one meeting, we discussed, maybe it was a working session, we talked about over paving where it's not needed, and just having a lot of blacktop. What's the rationale, at a time that the fast food industry is seeing less and less indoor dining and more and more drive-through? Why so many additional parking spaces? And maybe that's not a question for you, Timothy.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think I'd be able to answer that.
Yeah, I think the developer maybe can address it, but I think, just specifically with the Chick-fil-A, for example, the Chick-fil-A in Glenbrook, I think it just meets, just meets the minimum parking requirements, and it struggles to, to meet the demand at that, at that particular store.
Okay, hi.
Would you state your name?
My name is Mark Campbell, my address is 1010 Commerce Drive, Bogart, Georgia. So I'm, I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm the civil engineer, working for Chick-fil-A on this project. It's a great question, Wendy. Chick-fil-A is a little bit different, maybe, than some other restaurants, or maybe quick-service restaurants, as you might have experienced, hopefully. But one of those differences is, they do have a higher staff. So some of the extra parking spaces are actually kind of in the rear area there. And we want to have enough parking for the team members, as we call them at Chick-fil-A, they're not employees, but they're team members, to be able to park, and what we certainly want to be is good neighbors. So if we removed all those extra 14 or 15 parking spaces at the rear, then unfortunately, those employees would have to park somewhere, I'm sorry, team members. And so, we don't want them to create a burden on any adjacent property owners. So that is the reason why. That, that minimum requirement varies from municipality to municipality, and based on our experience, from a marketing standpoint, 61 would not quite be enough for this size store with this number of dining seats, to be able to service the community and have the team members park as well.
Thank you. And one more question. What is the stack capacity for the drive-through as it's designed right now?
So, and, and I, I left my plan sitting right over there, but my recollection is that this is a true double-lane drive-through. So I can tell you, the way this is designed is based on the latest drive-through technology. So we would not have designed a site that looked like this in 2019. But it is more than double of the nearest Chick-fil-A that's, that's here in Hendersonville as well. So it, it is.
Because they're on their third, third design.
Even with the remodel, this is more than double of that.
Okay, good, thank you. Let the people rejoice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Barry, you have questions, comments?
My question is to Keith and Timothy, will this road wrap around the other two parcels that will be developed? So all three of these parcels will have access to that road?
Yes. I have one question too, Keith. Is that road going to be developed out immediately with this Chick-fil-A all the way across? Or will it?
with this Chick-fil-A all the way across, or will it be developed at a later time?
I believe that it'll be developed at a later time, however, the sidewalk along Main Street will be extended all the way up close to the bank.
Okay, thank you. All right. Timothy, it is your night. Premier Park...
Oh, we need to vote on this.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Motion with all staff comments.
So, this is...
Okay, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
Sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Timothy, again, Premier Park, Lot One revision, will you please discuss that?
Sure, so this is located in the Premier Park Plan Development, which is a heavy commercial zoned plan development. This parcel is at the corner of Volunteer Drive and Old Shackle, they'll be subdividing it into three lots to accommodate potential future development. Access to, access to these three lots will be off of, they'll have one potential future access of Volunteer Drive, new access, plus they'll be required to tie into the existing access there in front of the bowling center. No access off of Old Shackle. Again, this is just a lot subdivision, it's not for development, that will come possibly later.
So, did I hear you correctly, there will not be direct access to Volunteer? They're going to do a little frontage, and then tie into the fun center, bowling place?
Correct, there, yes, there's an existing access easement there in front of the bowling center that they'll be tying into.
So, are the water lines and the drainage and all that going to be moved, because...
Yes.
Clearly, they know who their buyers are to want to start splitting the slot.
Yes, they, that's part of this subdivision plat, is the relocation of those existing easements. They have submitted to staff a FDP, staff-level amendment, to show how those potential, how those future buildings could be oriented, and so, they have, they're realigning those easements in accordance with that plan.
Because if they're splitting it into three, they're clearly thinking they're going to sell these off or develop three buildings there.
Correct.
And based on what you're hearing, you have no issues with any of that? Or we get to gripe when it comes up?
Correct, well, they've, right, they'll have to meet all of our stormwater requirements, utility districts' requirements for water and sewer easements and access, so...
Just seems to me, we're getting the cart before the horse here, but if they want to split it, it's their right to do so.
Right, so they've, again, they do have, they did submit a staff-level FDP amendment to show how that potential future development would lay out. So, but the next step would be site plan requirement, site plan submittal, so you'll be seeing any future development.
Tim, I have a question, or clarification, wasn't there one additional future access to Volunteer, potential access?
Yes.
Just to clarify on that.
Yes, there's, yes, so there's, there's, the access, existing access in front of the bowling center, plus the access in front of, I think, the, would be the middle lot, if I recall correctly.
Would that be a full access, or is that going to be a right-in, right-out, or...
Stephen, do you recall?
I do not recall what was on the development plan for that.
But no, no access onto Old Shackle?
Correct.
So, if they're wanting to do retail that fronts Old Shackle, they got problems.
Correct, no access to Old Shackle, and that's specified verbatim on the plat.
Okay.
I know this is probably a silly or redundant question, but with the redevelopment of Old Shackle across the railroad tracks, have they taken that into consideration in this plan?
That's one of the staff comments, is that they have to reflect those plans on this plat.
And then you have the Chick-fil-A, and then the Premier Park Lot One Revision, they're all on the consent agenda. Go ahead.
I move we approve all with the, all staff comments.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second? We'll use our stands in front of us to cast the vote.
Motion passes with six yeses, zero abstentions, and zero nos.
Very good, thank you. All right, we move to the next part of the agenda, and it's two different resolutions, okay? So, Resolution 2024-05, it's a resolution recommending the acceptance of the completed streets in Durham Farms, Phase Three, Section 20AB, Hendersonville, Sumner County, Tennessee. Any comments or discussions about that?
I will note that this did go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman Public Works Committee, and did pass out of that, and the next step for this, after the vote here, will be, it'll go to the next Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting for acceptance.
All right. So, we have this in front of us, do I have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion by Wendy, second by Beth, that was a very quiet Beth.
My voice isn't all above.
That's okay, all right. So, I understand, so we have a motion, and we have a second, so we'll cast our votes in front of us on our stands.
Motion passes with six yeses, zero abstention, no zeros.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, Resolution 2024-06, it's a resolution recommending the acceptance of the completed streets in North Parish Place, right-of-way, Hendersonville, Sumner County, Tennessee. Is there any...
Move to accept.
I'm sorry. Oh, you move to accept? Do we want to have comments first from you?
No, that's okay.
We're good, so we have a motion to accept, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Wendy, Charles, she beat you just by here. All right, so we'll use the machines in front of us to vote.
Motion passes with six yeses, zero abstentions, and zero nos.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have staff-level projects approved and staff-level projects pending, so there's quite a group of those, I'm not going to read through all of them, I'm sure all of you can see them, if you have questions. It's time to bring it up, Keith can discuss it. I'll give you all a chance to peruse this. There's no vote on this. All right, no questions, I'm sorry, go ahead, Beth.
Kiki's Breakfast Club.
Kiki's Breakfast Club.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Otherwise, we move on. All right, finally, Planning Director comments, Keith, you have anything that you'd like to tell us?
Actually, no, not this evening, Mr. Chairman, so, unless anybody had a question about anything, nothing to share this evening.
Who's that clock?
It's not there anymore, is it?
The clock, it fell off the wall, I believe, and so we haven't put one back up yet.
We've got to pass the hat to get the money.
Yeah, to get the clock, there you go.
Go to Walmart, they have a special every day with the clock.
Okay, so next, we have adjournments, so do I have a motion?
So move.
All right, I have a motion, have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed?